Good evening, everybody. It's Monday, July twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four at six P. M. And I'll call to order the Free Time Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be on the YouTube page. This evening, we have a combined meeting with the Board of Health. So I'll kick it over to Margaret to open up the Board of Health meeting.
It being six o'clock and having a quorum present, I will call the combined Board of Health and Board of Selectmen meeting to order.
All right. So I guess we'll just start. Item one, this is discussion and vote on the oversight of the transfer station. So we've had some discussions about this, I think, in the past, some of us individually, but the the right now, obviously, the the transfer station comes under the Board of Selectmen still, even though the Board of Health and Board of Selectmen have now been bifurcated into two different boards. And I think the discussion is kind of where I see it is, should the transfer station be a part of Board of Health or should be under Board of Selectmen? You know, I think you guys have, you guys discussed this on your meeting. Kind of want to understand where we all stand on this and what we think makes sense. So I don't know. I guess what was the outcome of your, of when you guys discussed this?
We didn't really discuss it.
No, you didn't? Okay.
We didn't really discuss it. I asked one question and was told that that would come up at this meeting, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We weren't really sure what exactly was in oversight, what exactly does that entail?
What does that mean? Yeah.
So we kind of treated our meeting as a, let's find a day and time that we could meet.
That makes sense.
Get more information.
Yeah. I mean, we should articulate, like, what does oversight really mean, right? I mean, Debbie, what do you think?
So my thought process is with the transfer station, Vicki runs the day-to-day operations down there. The concerns I have are the bigger items such as MS four stormwater runoff, which is, you know, an issue that, you know, we permit every year. I think the the report comes back with things that should be done down there. I need someone to sort of dig their teeth into that and help direct those those things that need to be done. And also OSHA, that requirement that we're, the town is required to comply with OSHA. Someone to just make sure that it's being complied with, that there's a lot of pieces to it, like, is the training done? Do we have what we need in place down at the transfer station? So I think those are the things that I'm looking for, for oversight to go in there once a week, just make sure everything's in good shape, everything is fine. And to the bigger picture, more maybe of the site, like, is the site good? MS, like I said, stormwater management. I know Vicki and I have talked about different things, but I don't think I have the bandwidth or Vicki has the bandwidth, and I don't mean that that you can't do, but it's time-wise to figure out, okay, they want.
I don't have the manpower. It's just me and Tom.
Right, I think, I mean.
A lot of the things on that plan for the stormwater thing were drainage, cleaning it, taking down trees and stuff and.
Yeah, so it's a matter of taking that information and coming back to Chuck.
Yep.
Planning board, what, how do we get this done? Funding, how are we going to fund it? Bringing it to me, saying, okay, Deb, I need to do X, Y, and Z. How are we going to fund it? It's, it's, it's a lot, like, that MS four stuff is a lot. I can't quite get my head into it. I know you and I have had multiple conversations about it.
Yep.
So that's one piece. And then again, the OSHA, which is sort of new, right? We weren't, the town was exempt from OSHA. We have now, we have to comply with OSHA. There's a lot of requirements with OSHA. Just making sure that we are, and I think the transfer station is a big, there's a lot of OSHA requirements for the transfer station, given what it does. So that's a big one, just a general oversight of OSHA. Where's the checklist? What, what trainings? What do we need? It can't be done overnight either. It's, it's a lot of, there's a lot of things that haven't been done because we were exempt from OSHA. Those are two of my main sort of oversight things that that I think are lacking. And I know, like I said, I've met with Vicki. We've, we've discussed these things. It's just a lot to do with everything else going on down there. So this is kind of the main things, and I think just a once-over, once a week, you know, hey, where are we at? What's going on?
What about, like, things like, you know, obviously, you know, town votes on the budget, but during the budget process, right? You know, we have the joint meeting with Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and everyone comes and fights their case for their budget, like, would that be now go to the Board of Health or would that still be?
I think it would have some oversight, you know, we work in tandem, right? The, the town administrator works with the department heads. I'm sure the department head would work, you know, like, right now I work with Vicki. I'm sure she would be, it would be a group effort, in other words, yeah. The Board of Health will probably write the budget with Vicki's input.
Yeah.
And then meet with me and go over it. The budget, and the other thing too is grants, right?
I'd like to lift that up.
The, the grants, I think, you know, I try to get as many grants as we possibly can. I do believe there's grants to do some of, like, the stormwater runoff. There's grants for some of this stuff. But again, I haven't had time to pursue the grants for the stormwater runoff. I know Vicki hasn't had time. So also, I think that's a piece of it, right? Can you look at grants? Can you find some grants? I will help write them if you say, okay, this is what I need a grant for. Here's a grant. I need some help writing it. I certainly would help write it and facilitate it. But then you've got to get the grant, spend the grant, report on the grant, which is another, whole other piece of grants. So I think there's some pretty big things that I'm looking for some assistance with in conjunction to the day-to-day operations.
Excuse me, this will also require some certifications for certain people to be able to do some of this? Like, you're going to have to be certified for certain things under OSHA?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
It's just like compliance with OSHA, right?
Only real requirement is a health card. Like, they, when they, you have to drive the equipment and they want an updated license. And when they come, like, if they, the OT showed up for inspection, first thing they ask for is your your driver's license, your hoisting license, and your health card.
Okay.
We have those on file in the office and readily available if they did show up.
That's for you running the day-to-day operations, but for someone to just check to see if we're compliant, it's more of a lengthy checklist and say, okay.
They checked them if we have a mercury spill kit, eye wash station, wound kit, hot hat, safety PPEs, things like that. I used to be CPR, but we haven't gotten CPR training since Kevin Bonato left, and that was sixteen. So things of that nature. Like, if there's a fire, they, how you would handle it, who would, you know, what would be the protocol? First, we'd have to get the people out of the swap shed.
Now, just to, like, kind of flush this, right? So if there, say there's, like, an HR-type issue, right?
Mm-hmm.
Not, not that I'm anticipating that, but like, would that go to Board of Health now or that go through?
Most HR issues currently come to me, right?
Yeah.
And then I usually do loop in whatever board is involved because they're their direct supervisor. It just depends on what the issue is.
And then just out of, like, I should know this because the majority of my time as a selectman, we were also the Board of Health. But like, when we, when we would discuss the transfer station, was that as a Board of Health? I can't recall.
Yes, yep. As the, like, when I was.
You're not the Board of Health anymore.
I know, when we were saying, well, historically, when we were, like, would, like, just if I even think about, like, the agenda, like, was any transfer station stuff generally under the Board of Health part of the agenda?
Yeah, that's where it almost always was, at least for the year I had it. And it would really, you know, say something that came up like we were doing a permit for or an order of a bid for testing. You know, that stuff, it would all come under that. So it would, it would show up under Board of Health, so.
That makes sense.
So it was obviously part of the agenda, but separated, kind of like, you know, the other stuff that we deal with day-to-day.
Do either of you guys have an opinion? I mean, now, you're in a situation because you're both.
To me, it's, it doesn't really impact me too much because I'm on both Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen. However, when you look back at the meetings, Board of Health was under, sorry, the transfer station was under the Board of Health. So as we separated the two functions of Board of Health and Board of Selectmen, it stayed with the Board of Selectmen versus going with the Board of Health. So in my opinion, it, it kind of seems like a smoother transition to just keep it with the Board of Health, seeing that's how it's been done for, gosh, for years prior to me, so.
Yeah, I did my own, like, little research and I kind of looked at other towns and, like, it's kind of a mixed mash, right? It's like, and couldn't find any kind of, like, clear, sometimes it seemed to be under, you know, Port of Health sometimes. It's one board, whatever, it's, it all can, it seems to be mixed from what I saw.
Sometimes they come under the DPW.
Yeah, that's true, yep.
Which I think at some point that we, we may want to head that way, but not for some time.
Okay. So I guess thoughts from, I guess.
I feel like a child nobody wants.
No, no. We're fighting over you.
We're trying to figure out who makes more sense.
I know, I.
Right, that's what, like you ever said, we're trying, making sure that the decision going forward is the best interest, not just the transfer station, but the residents and the boards that are involved in it. So if you look at it, we talked a lot about compliance, compliance, compliance at the state level, right, from OSHA to MS four. And I don't, not, not to say we're not set up for it, but it, Board of Health is typically in the compliance business, right? Whether it's septic or something else, they're already in that field, right, in compliance. Doesn't mean that the Board of Health agent is going to be in charge of the, of the transfer station. That's not what this discussion is. But the oversight of the Board of Health is inherently compliance, 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 to make sure it's environmentally safe, protected, and everything else, so.
That we're not dumping asbestos in the back, right?
You got it, you know, so it makes, it makes sense keeping it with the Board of Health and just, and it should have just transferred seamlessly, but in transition, I, I think it was just an oversight that didn't, didn't get moved over at that time versus now we're talking about it, so.
Yes, we're not talking about the day-to-day running.
No.
We're just, like you said, a checklist.
I think so. That's, that's how I look at it. I mean, you know, each department sort of runs their own department, and Vicki's the supervisor down there, running day-to-day operations. And for me, this is just more of a, was a clarification exercise, like, it always was the Board of Health. The Board of Health was a selectman, so it was one and the same on some level. Well, now we're separated, so where, where are we going?
All right.
I don't know that the Board of Health has the has the ability to do those things that I'm talking about either, in terms of oversight, in terms of, do, do you have, I mean, you know, Kevin's here, the health agent. Do you have the, you know, time to do OSHA checks and MS four stuff? I, I know that you're extremely well-versed in stormwater management and things like that, but I think that's important to, to look at too.
We're not talking the health agent going and doing this. We're talking about the.
The board?
The board, whether it's a board member or them sending a representative. We're not talking about, the health agent is now in charge of all of this.
Okay.
Guess who would do it right now, like, before this? Who would we send out?
It's not being done. Other than what Vicki does do, that she can do.
Yeah.
Meaning, like, the time, the time, like I said, we've had numerous conversations about MS four, and it's like, we need to do X, Y, and Z. And it's, it's bigger than the day-to-day operations. It's not Vicki saying, okay, let's just call up and.
But in previous years, when Paul Bujor, my first department head, he handled all that with the stormwater, all that stuff. We never handled that at the transfer station. I was attend, an attendant then, and I had someone above me. We never did any of that stuff. We, we, when I, when she mentioned it to me, I was like, this is new to me. But I took the packet and read it, and I was like, where is this storm drain? Because some of them, you don't even, if you don't know where they are, you wouldn't think that they would be there, and they're there. And they're covered, and they need to be uncovered and cleaned, and she wants them, the water to go certain part. She wants her retention thing done, and hey, that's what we got to do, we got to do it. But when there's only two of us, and, well, excuse me, two and a half of us, but.
And when she says she, she means the engineer.
Yeah.
Not, not me.
No, that's, yeah, Annie Tucker, who was in Colorado, and I got some other woman now, Karen, but she's very nice too. So that's where we're at with that, so. And I went to a seminar in Bourne, and until we got all of the, all, it was a whole bunch of DPW, I was like, I think, the only real transfer station that was separate from the DPW at the time, and I was like, boy, that's weird. And I was, it was myself and Dennis, I think. And we had some fun laughing at each other's work skills, but the bottom line was we were, we were missing out on a lot of PPE stuff and fire stuff and, you know, what do you do? And the eye wash station, we've had one old. We reordered a new one. We have a new mercury spill thing, PPEs, we have face cut, ear stuff. But there are other things you need because you have to stay current and stay well-versed, and if there is an issue, well, something happens.
Yeah, and I, I think that's one of the major concern as well as the stay current part, right? There, there's so many new things coming up that, you know, that this transfer station will need to start doing in the near future, right? State can come down tomorrow and say this, you shall do this, and then we'll have to scramble and, and kind of do A, B, C. What that is and what it looks like is to be determined, but we know it's coming at, at some point. So at this point, I think the idea is to get started on some of these measures that other, other transfer stations are already doing. Get our legs up on it, right? Let me sure that we're ahead of the curve. And go through a checklist, as, as painful as it is, it does provide you a set of steps, the next step forward, so. Yeah.
All right. So it sounds like, I mean, do we have consensus of this? I mean, that will transfer oversight to the Board of Health or?
And they'll be, you'll give us all the information we need because we're starting.
From scratch.
From scratch. We, we don't know anything. We don't have access to anything.
We're looking for some help on Sundays, so.
Getting rid of the.
Debbie, is, you don't have any issues in kind of, obviously?
I give you what I have, which I think is, I have an OSHA checklist and I have the MS four report. I know Vicki's talked to them, but again, it's trying to find the manpower too to get some of this stuff done.
Yeah.
Yeah, but maybe you can't. Maybe you're going to be tied up with something else. We're going to call him something else, you know what I mean? I just think that needs a little bit of clarification.
So it's, okay.
Between us.
Yeah. So I think, I think it's doable. We just need to really see what exactly is involved. How much can we do without that knowledge of the stormwater management and, and OSHA and and all of, you know, if, if we can get all that information and we can look at it and, and develop a plan, whether we write our checklist so that any one of us could go down with the checklist and say, all right, these are the things and know what we're doing. It's a little rough right now to say, okay, yeah, we'll jump in and do it and then find out down the road that, that it's, yeah, we're not qualified. It's much more complex than we thought.
Okay, so what do you, so should we vote on this now or should we not? Should we hold off and do, do you want to maybe do some more research with Deb or? How do you think we should proceed? What if, what if we vote, just so to, to make this more efficient, what if Board of Selectmen vote now? And then, you know, pending the Board of Health vote? And then you guys can do your research, and then if you want to have your own meeting and vote on it, accept it and deny it, and if you deny it, it comes back to us. Otherwise, you know, you can accept it. Does that make sense?
That sounds reasonable.
Okay. All right, so without, I want to, a motion that the transfer station will be transferred, no pun intended, to the Board of Health, pending their vote to accept the transfer station under their purview.
Motion made.
I'll, want me to?
All abstained because.
Yeah, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then now, item two, this is discussion of vote moving from imprinted town bags, trash bags, to a sticker program. And so. Yeah, this is definitely more Board of Health, but.
I'm done, right?
I think so, yeah. Well, actually, there is a transfer station part of this, right?
Okay.
Because what, from the, what I read, a lot, some other towns that we compared to.
I know what you're going to say.
They set of cash, they use, they use stickers.
I think that would be complicated for us, just because I know of, I used to work for someone and I would go to their transfer station. And you'd, like, if you had a couch, it was so many stickers and so many stickers for the bags.
Yeah.
And stuff. I mean, I don't even have a credit card machine that works yet, and you want me to take stickers?
Yeah.
You know, get me the credit card machine for us. It may be able to, I just think that would be, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't care about, it's not the cash thing too, because how do you know you're getting a sticker that's a valid sticker too?
Yeah, that's one thing I thought about too, but.
Yeah, because everything, you have a cricket, you can make anything.
Yeah.
Have you, have you asked Patty to help you with the credit card machine?
It's the Wi-Fi, the, it's always, it's like it, because we're digging down in a hole, that was the problem. I, I believe if we had something that was hardwired in, like the ones that are at Circle K and stuff, we'd have better connection.
Talk to Patty.
No.
Treasure.
All right.
Yeah, I know where the goal is to get more Wi-Fi down there, more electrical and things like that, so that, that should get fixed.
As soon as you get Pat, like, when you go down the safety lane to the kennel, you get a quarter of the way there and it's lost. You go towards where the swap shed is, it's lost. So it just, like, hovers, and even you can ask Lisa. Should we, when she comes into the office and puts on her devices, she's got her cell phone, her work cell phone, her laptop, her iPad. We have our laptops. We have our cell phones. And the guy said, oh, you could have two hundred things on there. I said, I don't think so, because somebody always gets bounced off. She's off the printer. She's printing something. It's printing on my printer.
Right. No, we should fix that.
I mean, we could probably get, like, a Wi-Fi, a Wi-Fi, like, sender.
I just upgraded their Wi-Fi. I just upgraded it.
Yeah, and it's still kicking us off.
I'm wondering why you're all on wireless devices, though. Why aren't you?
Do we hardwire in the credit card machine? Because it probably should be anyways.
Yeah, that's what, because that's what they started with, was something that was wireless. So.
All right, well, yeah, we should definitely figure that out.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
But, okay, and regardless of the transfer station part of this, I think just in general, right, discussion here is for the trash bags to, rather than, you know, or try to switch to using the stickers, which I think is an interesting idea, just because we obviously get a ton of complaints about the quality of the trash bags.
The quantity too. Other surrounding towns, they give ten bags per sleeve for the same prices that we're charging, and the quality is better.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. Ours are kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
I get plenty of complaints, people trying to get other ones from me, and I'm saying, I don't do refunds.
Yeah.
You know, but, I mean, and the strength, you could go to the wave at the top. Maybe try first, better get, and a better product to put out before switching to stickers. You got to think of the drivers too on the trash truck. If they're going to be picking up bags and looking for stickers, and stickers don't stay on, it's cold, they fall off, are you going to leave that resident's trash there?
I was thinking about.
This is already, I, I mean, I, I called and spoke with someone from Borges because I wanted, you know, there, we can all sit here and make a decision on this, right, but they're the ones who are going to be dealing with it. And, you know, everyone puts a trash bag out, it's standing up, it falls over, it's now face down. Those guys, their job is to get it away from your doorstep, all of it, and they want to do it as fast as possible. That's how they make their money, right? And then the other part I worry about is Kevin gets a contractor bag that's ninety gallons and slaps one sticker on it for a little bag. Now they're trying to play compliance as to what, that's obviously an extreme, but.
That's, that's, that's a good point, though.
You get thirty-gallon bag, you know, there's so many different variations of bags. We're going to confuse the homeowners.
Yep.
What I did ask them was, you know, we've had some problems where we've put this out to bid for the bags, and we've got one company to send back.
Yeah.
So we've had an issue, right, where there's a monopoly on it. Dyson uses a clear bag that's imprinted with their logo, and it doesn't have the drawstring. It just, to your point, it has the waves on the top, right, that ties the plastic together. And he said that they've had less than a handful of issues with them for as long as they can remember. So I almost wondered, do we go to that model first and try that, right? And see if that worked, because then I know that at least those guys are getting the right size, you're getting the right-sized bag.
Yep.
You know, fill it with your trash, and then we're not worried about it, because it's not fair to do to those guys. And then, you know, he was even saying that some of the places they pull up, they have the barrels on the side of the road, and they're using the truck to dump it. Now they have to dump it into the truck and try and shuffle through to find the sticker on the bag.
Yeah.
I just don't see it.
Yeah, that wouldn't work for the, yeah, I know what you're saying.
In that type of system, in Rainham, the trash goes to their transfer station, and the guy that's at the gate will say, how many bags you have? If you have three, you give them two stickers. And if you have, whatever you have, that's how it's done. And it's dropped off there. It's not even a curbside pickup.
Oh, they don't do a curbside pickup. That's a, that's a distinction, right?
I already have enough animals at the dump, thank you. Not into rats, I'm sorry.
Any thoughts on this? You guys?
I know that, um, Luan worked on an RFP for the bags, that we are getting a quote on the wave top, so we'll have that information.
Okay, good, because I did ask them.
Wave top, twist tie, and the drawstring, so all three, small and large.
And you can still get the stress flex kind of thing on it, because the residents seem to like that.
Yeah, and when.
Yeah, the stretch ones were the, when we went away with those, that's where all these issues started coming up, is when we got away from those type of bags.
Yeah.
So we will have more information.
I did ask them to send over if they could get a contact from Dyson. I'm assuming that it's still the same company they're probably buying them from, if they're the only company around that seems to be doing it. But he did say it's a clear bag that, you know, so.
And that would be good too, because if you had a Mac come around from DEP that wanted to do a reconnaissance of your how well we're recycling, how well we're doing with trash, and like quantities going out into the landfills, they would be able to see if there's any recycling material in it, because that's what they do. They, and they give you a sticker if you have, like, more than, I forget how many items per bag. And this way, it gets them to correct how they're recycling.
Yeah, and I think recycling is more expensive to get rid of than trash, right? Am I, am I correct in that?
I believe you are.
Like substantially more, correct?
And it's only going to get worse, so.
Both are only going to get worse. I mean, there's, there's only so many places left that are accepting trash, so it's not going to get any better, I will promise.
My phone has been ringing like crazy all summer, and the first question I say, are you a resident? No. Well, I'm sorry, can't dump here. Can't bring your stuff here.
Yeah, currently, you know, as we all know, most of us, not, not everybody, are putting a bag from, like, a hefty bag, not to throw any name brands, but let's say hefty, it's commonly known, and then adding those bags to current town trash bags.
Yeah.
So we're adding more waste to the landfill that there isn't much room. So we need to buy, we're buying, we're trying to buy time ultimately, right? Three to five years is where we're looking at projecting, right, as far as start thinking about other options, as far as where we put our trash. And that's going to get, that's going to be expensive, right? So by removing, let's say, we, we had ten thousand residents on, I know it's around nine thousand, but say, ten thousand bags a week removed from the, the dump, does that help out? Does that buy us more time? So that's where the sticker idea kind of came in. Now, do we think of the trash person, picking up the, yes, of course. We also think about the businesses that are holding the bags, right? Or the shelf space that they have to have, not to mention the residents looking for these bags. Whatever system we do move forward with, we, I think we need to have them more readily available, whether it's an Amazon option, a Walmart option, something you could get online versus running to a store every week, right? Stickers are a little easier in that regard, right? You could buy a handful and kind of just, you know, stuck them in the drawer versus a bag. So those are the things that I'm thinking about as we move forward with trash. How do we make it more efficient and more reliable, and always try and make it a bit more environmentally friendly, but remove the frustration of having bags rip on you in your driveway and having to double-stuff them? That's what we're trying to solve here, and I think a solution is needed, whether it's stickers or the clear bags. I'd love to see them. You know, maybe get us a couple of samples and try them out. Because then everybody uses three bags. I know our seniors probably use one bag a week, one, one bag every couple of weeks to a month, right? So they might not have those same issues as versus, like, a family of my, like, myself, a family of six, that's going through two, three, four bags a week, right? But there are many, like me out there as well, as far as family size and everything else. So things to think about as we move forward with the discussion.
All right, yeah. So should we wait and get, when we, for that, so you put out the RFP for the different type, bag types, right? We haven't got that back yet, I'm assuming?
I think it's August fifth that it's due.
Okay, so what, maybe we'll, you know, I guess more, that's probably more a Board of Health thing, is that what we think, to, to make that decision, or is that on us?
Here's that, same thing, right? It was the Board of Health, but now it's the Selectmen. We're doing it.
The Board of Health cannot enter into a contract. The Selectmen always have to enter into the contract.
Yeah.
So it was always the Selectmen that voted on and entered into that contract.
For the trash bags.
And they were acting as, as one, so whether they were giving advice to themselves, but be, to be clear.
Yeah.
The Selectmen are the ones who entered in that contract.
That makes sense.
I think that my point was that it was the Board of Health that was, like, ordering trash bags, in charge of trash bags, dealing with the trash bag. Yes, the Selectmen are the. Uh, dealing with the trash bag, yes, the selectmen are the only ones that can enter into a contract.
So, but I think that I would also argue that I would like their input to come to us before we decide on which direction to go to. Right, so we can enter into the contract by voting into and, you know, agreeing and signing on the contract, but I think that. It should be at least in combination with the board of health. If this stuff's falling underneath the board of health, then. It would be naive of us as a board to make decisions on your behalf. So I think it's something that kinda has to be in combination with each other, right? You give us your input, then we use your input to make our decisions. Right, I mean, I'm just thinking of how do we include everyone that should be included. Uh, you're gonna look at things completely differently.
Gets mad, who, who, who are you pointing your hand? It's usually us, which is fine.
Alright, well, we have a meeting on August seventh. Will you have the responses back by then, Luanne?
She said the fifth.
Do the fifth, right?
I think it's the fifth. So we'll have them, and they're sending sample bags of each side as, as well.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay, so we can put that on the agenda.
Alright. Alright, well, that's our only two agenda items. So I guess you wanna close your meeting and we'll just continue on with ours?
And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. And meeting is adjourned at.
Six thirty-two.
Six thirty-two.
Alright, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Okay, so now we'll move forward with the, for select meeting. Item three, this is a discussion of vote whether approve the open session minutes from seven one twenty twenty-four and seven fifteen twenty twenty-four. All in terms of motion to approve those open session minutes?
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right here, item four, discussion of vote whether, uh, accepting and awarding the donation of tree services from Beaver Tree Works. Um.
Do we wanna wait for Rebecca on these?
Yeah, we were gonna skip hers.
So I think you wanna skip, um, or just put, you know, take out an order four, five and six?
Yep, we will skip four, five and six, come back to it. Do I have to make a motion to do that, by the way? I don't think we do, right?
I don't think you need to, I mean, sometimes you will make a motion to take the agenda out of order. I mean, we're in order, we're just kinda going bypassing those three.
Fine, so, uh, item seven, discussion of vote whether, uh, to move the movie night to Central Park. And approve and sign the agreement with Plymouth Flix. Um, this makes sense, I mean. Was there a particular reason?
So Kylie is here.
Oh, hello. So I, I think it makes sense to have it at Central Park, it's a more centrally located place, right? Um, cause wasn't it originally at, um.
Hathaway.
Hathaway?
But we didn't know that this was an option, because it's really under F, F I A, right? So there, um, it was never, I never thought it was, I mean, we, we never talked about it because, you know. I mean, I, I'm all about having stuff centrally located, I guess my issue is, is do we have something from them that says that it's okay?
Yes, the, the F, F, Free Town Lakeville Athletic Association voted at their last meeting to approve the movie night. For the eighth, the twentieth and the eighteenth, uh, August, September and October the ninth, uh, respectively, the days that Kylie put together. So, and they wrote an email to the town letting them know that it was voted on and unanimously approved by them, so.
I, I guess my concern, I know in the past, right, they wouldn't let, when they're at the Easter egg hunt, they wouldn't let them go on the field. So is there going to be a restriction that they can use it, but the kids can't go on the fields?
No, uh, the Easter egg hunt, when I looked into it, it was, the beginning of the season was, was starting the following week and they had just seeded. Or had done something to the fields, and it was a last second change to give the field time to kinda recover. From that seeding and whatnot. Could have been handled a little bit better. I, yes, that's, that's something that was all agreed upon. Uh, for this, they can be on the field with their chairs, blankets, snuggies, whatever they need, as well as putting the screen up.
As I say, you know, the screen gets staked in to the ground. And now the concession stand, cause that's one of the issues, right, is that, that the concession stand and the bathrooms will be available, which makes it a nice, um, convenience. But the concession stand is gonna be run by the F L A A and they're gonna benefit from that?
So F L A A did state that they will, they would open up the concession stand, right? Or allow use of the concession stand to the town for used for popcorn, things like that. So it could, it could be a combination of, of both, or, or just one. That's, that's to be determined, either way they were fine with it.
I don't think we have the manpower, right Kylie? Like, we don't really have manpower. She has, she just doesn't have a department like it's her.
Right.
So, uh, short of getting volunteers, which she needs volunteers just to help her. And, and, I mean, you could, you know, if I'm overstepping, just speak up. But I just wanna make sure that we're all clear, that this is sort of gonna be, uh, a joint. If the concession stand is open, that it will be manned by F L A A and they'll be taking the proceeds from that.
Which is fine, right?
Which I, well, I just think it's, I mean, I think it's good for the people, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That they can, um.
It gives the people, it's good for, it gives an incentive for them to let us use the field for that, right?
I just wanna make sure we're all clear though.
Oh, and it is, because at the end of the season, which ends today, is the last tournament, they'll, they'll have food left over that either. They either donate, cook and, and they throw barbecue for like all the volunteers when we clean up the, the area, or. Some of that food can now be used during these events and then it helps both the town and them to kinda reduce stock. Reduce what's there and not, not let anything go to spoil, so it does benefit everybody involved.
And it will reduce the cost, cause we won't have to bring in porta drons.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which we have to bring in at Hathaway.
And there's plenty of parking as well, A D, accessibility and everything else, which is a concern. In Hathaway, great location, but everybody would be parked on the street. Police presence wouldn't, you know, it's, they're right here, it's only about a hundred yards away, so it makes things a little bit easier and.
It benefits everyone.
It benefits everybody, right in the middle, and everything is not just always in the zone, in the zone, in the zone, it's, it's.
Yeah, as long as we have like someone, we need to have, obviously, to make sure someone's opening up, standing, also if there's like. I mean, obviously we don't want lights on, we gotta make sure we coordinate that part, right? Cause like, some lights should be on, but then where the movie theater, I guess, we don't want.
Yeah, no, the lights are all controlled by switches, so, uh, they could turn that on and off in the, in F L A A. And I volunteered my time to help with the concession stand as needed to be in there as a intermediary between both board and, uh, Kylie's event. Or the town's event, uh, under Kylie's tutelage, of course, um, to make sure that it's being run as, as smoothly as possible.
Perfect.
So.
I'm excited that something's getting done in the center of town.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Quick comment?
Yeah.
When you're setting it up with them, make sure that they don't have their sprinklers set.
I've been burned by that at my own tournament, so, yes, that was definitely a discussion that we've already had.
It's funny, like, like, I don't know if you, in the agenda, that's like literally one of the line items that they put on their sheet, is like, make sure the sprinkler system's.
Yeah.
I was like, that's definitely there for a reason. Someone made that mistake.
I, I have been there during a game while they've come on, it's like, give me a minute, run to the basement, shut them off, so yes, that's, that's been discussed.
It's a good valid point.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Nothing, a little shower while watching, I think the first movie's what, um, the migration?
Yeah.
Migration. Is that Penguins, or is that, um?
Birds.
Birds.
Yeah.
Trying to figure that out earlier.
Second one's Garfield and of course Hocus Pocus.
Yeah.
I do have Kenan Binks, so I am partial to that movie as well.
Alright, great. Alright, so, ready to vote on this?
Yeah.
Alright, so with that, I will entertain a motion, um, to move the movie night to Central Park. And, um, approve and sign the agreement with Plymouth Flix.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's not promote it.
One question, um, for Swank, with the, like, the movie licensing, is it possible to use the town credit card? Just to speed up the process? Cause it's like two weeks away and I wanna make sure we have the licensing so that.
I didn't even think of that. Yeah, that makes sense.
Just connect with me.
Alright, thank you.
We don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Whatever it does to make it as fast and as easy as possible for you to move it along, that's fine.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, great, so speaking of that, so, uh, item eight is, um, to approve and sign the agreement between the town of Free Town. And Swank for, um, movie license. I want to take a motion to sign that agreement.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Item nine, so this is discussion of vote, uh, whether approve the use of Hathaway Park for yoga classes on Thursdays. Instead of Fridays.
Yeah, I had, um, an instructor, she had some conflict with some of the Fridays and she's like, can we just move it to Thursdays instead?
Yeah.
Um, and we don't need exclusive use of the park, just a little.
Harsh, yeah. And I don't think there's anything, is there anything else going on there?
No.
Pickleball action?
Then, I mean, when we get the pickleball courts and, you know, we're putting the new basketball court up, so it's not exclusive use. So if you're just going down there, you wanna shoot some hoops, you can still go down and shoot some hoops, but there'll be people laying all over the grass, I guess, doing yoga.
I, I'll be stuck there, but it'll be all fair.
Alright, any comments or questions?
No.
Okay, great, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the use of Hathaway Park for yoga classes on Thursdays instead of Fridays.
Motion made.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, item ten, this is discussion of vote whether, uh, to allow exclusive access to the bandstand and cultural center on weekends. Uh, the weekends from eleven, so November third, twenty twenty-four through twelve one, twenty twenty-four, eleven AM to one PM for holiday decorating.
Yeah, this is for the cultural council.
Yeah, I have no issues with that.
No. I look forward to seeing the decorator.
I'm happy we're, they're, you can't really start thinking about this in, uh, July, so.
That's the way to do it.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to allow exac- uh, exclusive access to the bandstand and cultural, culture, uh, to the cultural council on the weekends. Eleven three, twenty twenty-four through twelve one, twenty twenty-four, eleven AM to one PM.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, item eleven, this is discussion of vote to approve town administrator to award, approve and sign documents related to Free Town Elementary. For A, entry pad, B, repair, refinish, um, uh, refinish and paint, paint the gym floor. C, preparing, opening for the new gym door. D, alarm system replacement, E, supply and install new gym door, and F, ramp and railing at the, uh, new gym door.
Fantastic, and this is what we voted on at town meeting, correct?
Yeah, so what, what, um, what's going on is we're trying to get these, some of this done during the summer. So they all had to go out for procurement, which I told you Luanne had done. But they're, they're coming in and you're not meeting until the nineteenth, I wanna be able to facilitate them and keep them moving. Um, and so that's, that's the intent of this, just because I don't know that we're gonna be able to get them done during the summer, but it, at least. I can cut off two weeks worth of the work, I'll keep moving them along. Um, so that's really what the goal is, to get some, at least some of these things done before, uh, the school year starts.
Alright, sounds good to me. So with that, um, I will vote to approve town administrator to award, approve and sign documents related to the Free Town Elementary School. For A through F listed before.
Uh, motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item twelve, uh, discussion vote whether to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five paving contract number three. Between the town of Free Town and Greeman Peterson, Peterson, Inc.
Uh, paving contract, this isn't me. I think this is probably a, a project that Chuck is working on.
Yeah, it's just like High Street, I think, I'm trying to find it in the gen pack, and, uh, thank you.
I think this is actually just for them to do the bidding process.
Do the bid, yeah, this is the same thing that's happening.
It's not for a particular street.
Thing, it's like five thousand three hundred and forty dollars, legal posting it, and then the bid document, the chairman. So, before we even.
Do the job.
Do the job, this is a pretty, okay. Alright, any questions or concerns?
No, this is the same company, if I remember correctly, that just, just did the ones that, like, for Chipaway Road and stuff, so.
They've done a bunch of stuff.
Looks great.
Alright, so, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the fiscal year twenty twenty-five paving contract between the town of Free Town and G P I.
Uh, motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item thirteen, discussion of vote whether approve the transfer requests from A C O assist, assistant, um, salary wages. Um, P P T to, what is that, dog tech? Professional in dog tech boarding?
Yeah.
And the sum of three hundred dollars, so just, there's a budget overrun for three hundred dollars, need to move some money around.
Yeah, for the Lakeville boarding.
Yeah.
Finance committee is already approved.
Yeah, they, they, they increased the prices, didn't they, Lakeville recently too, which would make sense.
Yeah, I think this honestly had to do with, you know, one of the, some of the, I don't know, what is, I mean, the crime that we had. And then those dogs and those animals had to be boarded.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And how, you can't, like, it's really hard to predict out, it's like, it's like trying to predict, uh, you know, plowing.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right, it's three hundred bucks, I don't think it's.
Yeah.
Weird, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer request, um, for, on item thirteen.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. It's too many ac- uh, like.
Yeah.
Difficult.
Abbreviations.
Abbreviations for me to say there. Alright, item fourteen, discussion of vote whether to approve ambulance abatements and write-offs for June twenty twenty-four. The sum of three hundred thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. I didn't, there's a note on the. Said May twenty twenty-four had no mandatory adjustments.
Yeah, they carry them all to this, so this really includes May and June.
Gotcha, that's why it's a bit.
The chief is on vacation, I am gonna talk to him, cause it does seem like it's getting hi- high, so I'm gonna find out what's, what, why. But, um, part of it is, cause it's multiple months.
Okay.
And we had voted at one point to allow them to go back, right, to, to chase the money a little bit longer.
For four months.
Yeah, so you would think that the number would be shrinking technically.
Which is, and you see with the write-offs of three hundred thousand, the collection, the, the amount we collected was fifty thousand. It doesn't quite add up with what we normally, what we've typically been getting for receipts. So, but like I said, I haven't had a conversation with the chief, I will.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And see what, um, what, why is it changing? Cause I feel like it is changing, whether it's the billing company, whether it's. Clientele, whether it's, I don't know, we'll find out more details.
Insurance companies just know, like, I don't know.
Yeah, they're just paying less maybe, you never know, right? Because they, you know, they vote and that's all they're paying.
Yeah.
And so you get that, those patients, or you get the ones with no insurance and that's what you're seeing there. But insurance, it may be a twenty-five hundred dollar ambulance bill and we only get five hundred dollars from the insurance company and they're all different and it's contractual. So they don't have any say in it.
So, we did have in here that in May, we collected about fifty-four thousand and June just shy of forty thousand.
Yeah.
So it i- it is substantially less than.
Right.
What we're writing on, so, it'll be interesting to find out.
And I wanna say our ambulance collections average about eight hundred thousand a year, so as I said, like, I have to talk to the chief.
Mm-hmm.
I'll get more information.
Thank you.
Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ambulance abatements and write-offs for June twenty twenty-four. The sum of three hundred thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This next one got me.
So, item fifteen, this is, um, discussion of vote whether to approve the request for a one-day wine and malt, um. Malt license by the Boys and Girls Club, Inc. at Camp Welch on August eighth, twenty twenty-four, from six to nine PM. I think you're here from Boys and Girls Club. Alright. Any questions?
No, I think we've done this before. This is, uh, I believe in, I'm gonna say yearly.
Um, it's soon to be yearly, it's newer, um, friend raiser. Um, we have La France Hospitality is gonna do, is running the bar. Um, it's gonna have food trucks and just beer and, um, wine, it's more of a friend raiser with all the work that we've put into camp to let everybody come see it.
That's awesome.
Sounds, it sounds like a good time.
I mean, I'm not gonna be the one to vote down of, uh, giving a one-day alcohol license.
No, and La France is a, a pretty big company, right? So they, you know, they know what they're doing, they'll have all, you know, all the insurance will be in place, obviously, and, right, so.
Yeah. Alright, be good?
Absolutely.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for a one-day wine and malt license by the Boys and Girls Club, Inc. At Camp Welch, August eighth, twenty twenty-four, from six to nine PM.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you very much. Yep, alright, we, we held off on items four through six. Okay, so item four, uh, discussion and vote on accepting and awarding the donation of tree services. From Beaver Tree Works. Um, and this seems like a very great offer from this, wanna speak to us a little bit?
Yeah, um, the owner of Beaver Tree Works kinda dropped in one day and explained that he had been. He had been offering this to Lakeville, I guess, for quite some time and wanted to branch out and offer it to Free Town. And wanted to know if we were amenable to accepting it, um so I brought it to my board a couple of weeks ago. We discussed it and they, of course, were yes, and um then I I, you know, wanted to see if we needed further permission. Kind of how to handle it, I've never, I didn't know how to handle the donation piece of it.
Yeah, no, it's, it can get tricky, so.
So how are you gonna decide, cause what, is it twenty five, up to twenty five hundred dollars a year?
Nah, well, it could be up, it could be a year, he just mentioned twenty five hundred this, this year, he didn't mention it as an annual thing, but.
So how are you gonna decide, like, that's my concern, right, cause I bet a lot of seniors are, need this help.
So his hope, Gary's hope was that he could spread it out, so that it would be, it would be small amounts. It wouldn't be cutting an entire tree down for twenty five hundred for one person, he wanted to spread it out over maybe four or five people. Do small trees and branches and cut a, you know, he said trim branches, small trees, tree safety, that type of thing. He wanted to kinda spread it out as he could, um but I do not know. I, that's why I brought it to my board, because I figured they were the people in town who would know maybe who was in need. And that, that was true, there were a few people that they already knew of, but I, nobody's calling the COA saying, hey, can you cut some trees down?
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, not that it wouldn't happen.
Sure.
They probably tell them, huh, too, probably and ask for that, but um maybe you need to set some guidelines, like it can be, like, maybe you do, you know. Up to five hundred dollars per person.
Which is at the discretion of really the gentleman, you know.
And for safety needs, I would say for safety needs first, like, yeah, you can't walk down, you walk away, cause you're, you, it's all been overgrown. Or something, or the, you know, safety, if you had a, needed to get an ambulance or something in and now there's, there's no. Um I think that safety concerns would be priority, and then I think then the rest would be, put your name in a hat. And pick, because I don't, I think if you just, if the board picks, or you go first come, first served, you're going to have some concerns from the seniors.
We are always trying to make sure that we're keeping things fair with what we do, so I think that's very important. Um the thing I was thinking about is maybe calling Lori in Lakeville and seeing if, how she handled it. Because if they've been doing this for a couple of years, maybe just learning off of what, how she's done it, maybe would be the best way of, of safety number one.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, what a great, I mean, he's a, you know, local guy and nice guy, um it, this is a great thing, you know.
Absolutely, uh I I had the pleasure of meeting Gary, I I had a recent tree issue myself, lightning strike. And um I I put it out there, hey, who's the local tree person to come out? And uh Beaver Tree was uh one of the people and I called Gary and he was like, sounds the same thing, he was out there, he gave me advice and he told me, hey, A, B, C. And cause of that conversation with him, I was like, this is a great company, so when I saw this on the agenda, I I thought, I thought of that right away. And I was like, what a great gesture for a company to come out and provide this to our seniors.
There's a lot of them right now, we've been humbled lately.
So good for him, good for the company and great for our seniors.
Absolutely, so I think, I mean, I have no problem voting this now and I I trust he'll figure out the details and, right? Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept and awarding the donation of tree services from Beaver Tree Works.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, and agenda item five, this is vote on approving the donation of a pool table to the Council on Aging. And what to do with the existing pool table, and this is a tricky one.
The pool table, a lot of action gets ha- is done there.
The things that we get stuck on.
There's a lot of meetings that have happened over that pool table.
Absolutely.
The stove for a while, we moved on from that, but now it's a pool table.
I don't know how many seniors have, when talking to me about the the space needs of how they had to have meetings at the pool table. Because there's no other space, which is a sad truth, but the truth nonetheless, so, so.
And we're not gonna solve this pool table problem right now.
No, 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 God, no, I'm I'm only bringing up, I'm just laughing about it, because it's, we're talking about getting rid of that pool table in particular, so.
At first they wanted two pool tables, and then I had to explain to them and show them by, we we actually had to show them. By tape on the ground why two pool tables was not safe, it was a fire risk, why if the elevator came in, the wheelchairs couldn't get through. We actually had to show the diagram on the floor of why two pool tables.
Yeah.
Um so once we got through that, now this is a bigger pool table, um that's being offered and they want that one instead of the one they have.
Has has anyone gone and checked out this, this other pool table, inspected it?
Reportedly, yes.
Have they played it on already?
I have not.
It's acceptable?
I have not, I've seen pictures, I've seen pictures, it's an eight, eight, eight and a half foot pool table. And we have a seven foot right now, and I was told that one foot means a big difference.
It is, that's regulation.
I love pool, don't get me wrong, but, a lot of discussion over one foot difference.
Now, I was just saying, like, my opinion from, I don't think, I I I personally don't have an issue with uh taking this and I'm gonna leave it at the discretion of your board to figure out. How to, you know, how to deal with it, but, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think as long as it's what the seniors want, it's an easy acceptance, right? Um and you're saying, hey, it'll fit, it's bigger, it'll still fit, we'll be fine, safety concerns, right? Um I know that there's quite a few people who do go there and play pool, right? So if that's what they want, then this isn't, this isn't easy thing, I don't even think, and and as far as getting rid of it, that's not an issue. We'll get Chuck to get, Chuck's gonna hate me for volunteering them, but we can have, if there's no use, if there's no value to it. We'll be able to just have to break it down and get it to the transfer station or whatever.
I think they'd like to donate it, but where it goes after this, I I don't, I don't know.
If someone wants it, then.
Is it still valuable?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, then hopefully someone will take it up.
We 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 re um, right before I came, they re-did it, refelted it.
We're a municipality, so we can't just donate things.
Correct.
Um.
Cause, yeah, but we could probably sell it on muted bid.
Or I thought, why don't you put it out in the pavilion?
There you go.
I really like my space up.
It's a big space, though, they could play pool outside.
I just don't know how it'll hold up in the weather.
Moldy pool table.
Moldy pool table, watch a movie out back, you know, sky's the limit. Well, when it, when the new table's in, give us a call, I'm sure we'll go play a game of pool with them, make sure it works properly.
But I mean, that's something, we can let their board decide as to what to do with the old, right, I mean.
But it, it, they don't believe it can be donated.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but if they don't want it, yeah, we can work on getting it on muted bid, or I don't, I mean, I don't know, somebody, other department can use a pool table. I mean, I don't foresee that, but I it, I I don't know what the process is for donating.
Can you play pool at a high school? Middle school? I mean, can, like, like, is there any issues with donating it to the school?
It it is a sport.
Yeah, we can start a pool, uh a billiards club at, at a public.
School is like our district, so that's, we could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it would work at elementary school.
We'll figure that out, that's the easy part, getting rid of the 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 equipment and make sure it's done correctly, so. But uh getting a a newer table is amazing for our seniors. Um I know it, like, like we've said, I I know you you see it every day, it gets used.
It does.
Right, it's a uh, it's like the, it's the water fountain.
Very rare.
It's uh, it's where the, where discussions are had, so. And I was, and I was there once, you know, we're doing interviews with Rebecca and there was some pretty uh, pretty interesting debates going around. That was getting hot and heavy, and especially with people's skills out there, it was, it was, I bring my own stick when I go.
Alright, so I'm not gonna get in the way of this, so I don't know, so uh, without, I'll entertain a motion to approve the donation of a pool. Accepting the donation of a pool table to the Council on Aging, um so I guess that's the first motion.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then what to do with the table, I guess I'm gonna split that into two different, I think, you know, I don't, I think we leave that to. The, I don't know, what do you think?
Declare it as excess and um surplus, I would say, declare it as surplus. And dispose of it via a muted bid or some other man- manner.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion that we declare the existing pool table as surplus and uh attempt to sell it on muted bid.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, and if we can't do that, if it doesn't sell, move it, then we'll, then we'll do something else.
Yeah, if I can find a way to donate it, I'll let you know.
Okay, great.
Legally.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, and then agenda item six, this is discussion of vote whether to accept the donation from Precision Windows. And Kitchen in the sum of three thousand two hundred ninety five dollars for work done at the Council on Aging.
It's a great move.
This was, I think this was before me.
Right, so this was, yeah.
Carl.
Yeah, so this is uh uh someone who did work at the uh tra- uh the Council on Agent Building. I think they installed the new door.
Yes.
The new door.
The, the, the front.
And um do- doesn't wanna get paid, um and has already done the work. So we said, well, we'll declare it as a donation, so at least you can.
Get tax write off.
Yeah, whatever he can do with it, uh but we have sort of this lingering thing, so we, so they, they wanna donate the work that they've done and the door. Which is already done, the work has been done, so otherwise we have to try to collect mu- we have to try to um pay him. And it was done in prior year, so that makes things complicated for us.
Alright, makes sense for me.
Another great gesture.
Any questions or concerns, yep?
Oh, this is great.
Alright, so with that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept donation from Precision Windows and Kitchen Inc. in the sum of three thousand two hundred ninety five dollars for work done at the Council on Aging.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Yeah, we have some great people out there, yeah, it's amazing.
It's overwhelming.
Alright, and then I think we're done, have we done Rebecca?
With Rebecca, yeah, I think so.
She's more than welcome to stay, but I don't blame her if she takes some.
I think they're gonna talk about the town planner position and that.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thank you guys, very much.
Okay, agenda item sixteen, discussion of vote on whether to um do the South Main Street sidewalk. Phase two project between Nottingham and High Streets.
This, this, yeah, go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, uh so, I think this is a great, great use of some opera funds that we have. Currently, we have the majority of the sidewalk on that side of the street where Nottingham and High Street is, going all the way to Fall River, past the uh, the bridge. You get to about High Street and now the sidewalk begins, the new sidewalks that were built about, I don't know, two, three, maybe four years ago. Are on the right side, where St. Bernard's side of the street is, and it's tight because of the telephone poles, the mailboxes. Uh and yeah, every other existing structure that was there. So recently, watching a a new mother with her, with her, with her child in the carriage. Trying to push herself off the grass from Simpson to High Street was heartbreaking to say the least. And then to try to fight traffic back and forth, playing Frogger, for those of us that have played that before, bouncing back and forth on the street, they're trying to find a place. Then I watched her go across the street and then she couldn't get her double wide carriage around all the poles. Had to go into the street, back onto the sidewalk, ten different times, that is a safety issue, A- not ADA compliant. I don't think that was, it was meant to be that way, but the fact of the matter is, it is that way and we, we should fix it.
Yeah.
Um everything's on that side of the street and it just makes sense to do it correctly.
It, it, and so what you're looking for is five thousand dollars for the engineer to just look into this. Um and I d- I could, I could, um if you approve opera money, we could use opera money. Actually, doing the sidewalk is probably gonna be quite expensive, maybe three or four hundred thousand dollars. It's gonna require land takings, it's gonna require a lot more than just fixing the sidewalk. And the sidewalk didn't get constructed three or four years ago, it just got, it just got reassembled.
Re- re- yeah, repaid, sorry.
So I just, I just, you know, I hear what you're saying and that is where we should have sidewalks, cause it get, people do use them on there. But I think maybe we have GPI look at repairing the one that's there versus adding another one on the other side. I ju- like, what, what is the road layout gonna afford that we don't have to do land takings, you know what I mean, like, how, how to make it work?
Well, is there any sidewalks there from Nottingham to, I wanna say fifty feet going up the hill, but it's just overgrown, you can't see it. And then there's some, some grass there, but looks like a sidewalk, it's just grass, so I'm not sure that's anybody's land, but the towns, right? The town owns X amount of property from the road in, right? The only concern.
Right, where you, we can't even find where the town, where the road layout is in the four corners, right, like, it's one of the things we're spending money on, so not always.
Right, right, not always, but this one seems pretty straight shot, it's.
I think, yeah, I think we have GPI, so I think.
Cause here's one of the other things I had thought of was, sorry Trevor, I don't mean to cut you off, but there's also the cemetery at the corner of High.
Yep.
Right, and then it kinda goes up pretty rapidly there, so then there's gonna be more than just a sidewalk. If you put a sidewalk that goes in, say, off the road and it's four feet in, to make it ADA compliant, what's that gonna do for accessibility? Into the cemetery that's there.
Retaining wall there.
So then you're gonna have to build a retaining wall, and then as far as people climbing into it, right? So it'd be more than just a retaining wall, cause now you're gonna figure out how they either get around it or creating steps up into. Cause we're still gonna have to create accessibility into that cemetery.
Right, but that's not where they enter through the cemetery in that hill, they they go on High Street and they take that, when you go around the corner, it's like a little cable box. And right behind the cable box is usually where you enter through the cemetery, so by fixing the sidewalks, you're actually fixing that as well. One for safety and aesthetically pleasing as well, so it'll actually.
So, yeah.
Benefit the town long term and the cemetery, creating that, cause if people are going up that hill. I don't, I think there's two metal bars, right, from the old cemeteries, um people going up, so I wouldn't recommend people going up there, cause the, it's just loose dirt. So that'd be a, something we should fix anyways, so, there's pros and cons.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't mind, cause I, it is a heavily, like, I know exactly what you're talking about too, like, I've seen people struggle and trying to get on the road and off the road.
It is a little, it, it, well, the sidewalk that's there, because the telephone poles are in the middle of it, make it difficult if you have a carriage, if you have a wheelchair, if you have anything like that. I'm just saying that this is bigger than what you think when you get into it.
Yeah, but I think, so.
Could this be potential of something that we could, if we get this study done or get some kind of design work done, like. I, this feels like something that we could probably get state or federal money for.
So I could probably get complete streets grant for it, um which we haven't applied for, cause we're waiting to do the four corners. But I don't know when that will be ready to go because of all the issues we've had there, so we could probably try to get funding that way. And it's a, it's a clear complete streets um project.
Yeah.
And I believe it was, it was on her, Victoria's, when we, if you remember, many meetings ago, we had the, the clean streets. And there was like the eighteen projects that was decided on, I believe, I believe that one, that was one of them that was on.
Yeah, that sounds familiar, actually, you mentioned that.
And I mean, I, I couldn't agree more, it's probably, it's our, it has to be our heavy, heavy, heaviest traveled road in a sonnet, right? So, or all town for that matter, so um if we can have sidewalks that we don't put people out onto the road.
Yeah.
For it, and you know, you do get people who park on Simpson and walk over to the church, so.
Yeah, and the way it is now, it kinda just, it is, there's a, a place for ADA to, for wheelchair to get one. So you leave Simpson to go towards the church, and on both sides, they're, they have the ADA ramps right, right? But then it just goes to nowhere, and it's like. It was a great thought, great that it's there, but the the project feels like incomplete at this point, so.
Not complete streets, incomplete streets, okay, alright, so I I, I'm cool with this, um. So I guess I'll, I'll entertain a motion to um to do the South Main Street sidewalk two project between Nottingham and High Street.
Well, do we wanna vote on actually doing it or just doing the study of doing it? Because are we putting ourselves up to saying we have to get this done?
Yeah, you wanna do the study.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, 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 you're, I'm a nut, so I'll entertain a motion to do a study on the uh, on, on a. Sidewalk.
Adding a sidewalk.
Adding a sidewalk, sorry, can't think right now, between Nottingham and High Street.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright. And then, so agenda item seventeen, discussion of vote whether to use federal opera funds for the design fee for South Main Street sidewalk phase two, in the amount of five thousand dollars. And we think five thousand dollars will cover that.
Here we are, you gotta quote.
Okay, alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to use federal opera funds for the design fee for the South uh Main Street sidewalk phase two.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have an agreement, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between GPI for the addition of a sidewalk on South Main Street.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, uh agenda item nineteen, this is vote whether approve and sign the final proposal for online permitting for the planning module. I thought we did this, like, but is this, this is the final, final?
I think it's just signing the, uh, I I think you probably approved it, I don't know, it's just signing the contract.
It's an addendum.
But n- uh was there an addendum?
I think they added a few things.
But the, I gotta look at the numbers, it didn't look like anything changed.
I think they added a few things, they added public view, maybe. Um but they're funded, they have the money, the board voted that's what they wanted for, there's like different modules and different pieces.
Yeah, I sound like, and we, we didn't take a lot of them.
The public view.
Yeah, there's a few other little dozen whistles.
Yeah.
Alright, any questions or concerns?
No.
I'm excited for this to take place, so. Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to um approve and sign the final proposal for online permitting for planning module.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Uh, agenda item twenty, discussion of vote whether approve the special town meeting to be held on October twenty first, twenty twenty four. The Uponafoot Regional High School Auditorium beginning at seven PM. Anyone have any issues with that date?
No.
No.
It's, I already marked it in the calendar.
Yeah.
We checked with Cheryl and Mike.
Just gonna say that.
Yeah, it's, all, all key folks are, where the school's available, it's nothing.
We're waiting on a response from the school.
And I saw we have a backup being. Alright, that works for me. Got the ball rolling on this. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special town meeting to be held on ten twenty one, twenty twenty four, at Uponafoot Regional High School Auditorium beginning at seven PM.
Motion made.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, agenda item twenty one, so this is the timeline, the proposed timeline for the special town meeting. Let's just read it out loud. What page am I going?
One, two.
Okay, so here's the timeline. So seven twenty nine, today, we uh, approve the timeline. Timeline is on eight five, physical posting at Town Hall, Police, Fire, Junior's Convenience Store, and Libraries. On eight five as well, Facebook and website posting, which is a note here that postings uh, will start. State articles submitted by citizens require one hundred signatures for special town meeting from the, for town voters. Um, to be added to the warrant. On eight eight, BOS, uh, on the BOS agenda. Uh, to open for submissions of the warrant for eight twenty, eight twenty. So yeah, submission, so we'll, wait, hold on.
The proposal in eight five opened it up eight twenty.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
Right?
Yep, and then on.
Yeah, eight eight.
And then on uh, nine nine, warrants to the BOS agenda to approve and close warrants for submission and approval to be sent to the Town Council and Finance Committee. On nine twenty three, warrants in the Board of Selectmen agenda for discussion and vote to open, approve, finalize, and close a warrant. On nine twenty five, send the final version of warrant to Finance Committee. Only thing yet, so eight eight is gonna have to. I'm not gonna be here on eight eight.
Eight eight's with the meeting where you would vote to open it, but it would be opening on eight twenty.
As long as we have.
Do it on eight nineteen.
Or you can do it on eight, as just, as long as you have a quorum, I just gotta make sure everyone's there. Like, I don't, I, that's just kind of procedural, right?
If they vote the timeline tonight, I think it should be all set.
Okay, I just follow what we did in the past, so.
Alright.
You're gonna open it on eight twenty. If that works.
Yeah.
I think it works, I just.
I think it's, no, this works fine, right? Cause we can, we can, there's still gonna be a meeting on eight eight.
Right.
I'm just not gonna be here.
Yeah, we'll have the quorum and carry zone.
I don't think they, they'd appreciate if I took a Board of Select meeting while in the, in the plane. Alright, um. Okay.
Just gonna read the last two, Trevor.
Oh, sorry, Jay, I got sidetracked. So the warrant given to Town Constable for posting, uh, oh, sorry, I think I missed this one, nine twenty five. Send file version, the warrant to the Finance Committee, and then warrants given to Town Constable uh, for posting on ten one. And warrants getting posted publicly no later than ten four. And then once again, the date being of the actual meeting is ten twenty one. Any questions or concerns?
Standard business.
Yeah.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed timeline for the special town meeting on ten twenty one, twenty twenty four.
Motion made.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay, agenda item twenty two, this is discussion of vote whether approve the addendum number three to the agreement for OPM services. For the fire station, number three, addition renovation.
This is just changing the agreement from being a flat monthly fee to an as-earned fee.
Okay.
No extra money, just.
Just, just, the way it's paid out.
Paid out.
Alright, and then it looks like to, is it also extended to?
Extended the time, because of course, you know, when we started this.
Longer than. Okay, so it goes from, it was originally gonna be October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, now it's gonna be going through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Right, although I expect the fire station to be done before then.
Yeah, but that gives us, that gives us wiggle room.
Yeah, for extensions.
Any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to um, approve the addendum number three to the agreement for OPM services for the fire station, number three. Addition slash renovation.
Motion made.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and then agenda item twenty three, discussion of vote whether to move the senior clerk for Conservation Planning ZVA to the map room.
So you know that um, Victoria uh, resigned.
Yep.
From, from the planning Conservation Department. So again, we have the attic being used as an office. And um, Nicole will be up there by herself. So where it's one person and um. We've got the map room, we're gonna clean it all out, make it an office, so that she can come down to the first floor. And get it set up, so that she's not up in the attic by herself. So, um, Kyle and I have been working on this for some time. Trying to get that room cleaned out. Now that the bathrooms are just about done, and the town hall, the, the interior town hall has been repainted and new flooring. Um, the, the plan is to put storage, some storage, not much, there's about three filing cabinets that need to be moved up into that attic space. And bring um, Nicole down with her files and whatnot, while we, while we work on getting space. You know, the additional space that we've been talking about at length of how we're gonna get additional space for the town hall.
So I think that this does the, the temporary fix of not having to put anyone at the fire station, right?
Right now, yeah.
Because then, but, and then it'll give some space upstairs to be able to move some things up, hopefully out of Cheryl's office, give them some space. Cause that's the office that I would say is the most critical, uh, as far as the amount of space that they don't have. It's just, it's another Band-Aid, but at least it's, it, it, to your point is, it gets, it takes away that safety concern that we've had. And it doesn't leave Nicole up there by herself, cause that's just not fair. So, I think it's a no brainer.
Kind of way from everybody.
What happens if you uh, hire somebody to replace Victoria next week? Where does that person go?
Well, we'll continue to work on it. I mean, we're gonna clean that, we are discussing um, adding, bumping the wall out, you know, when you go in the town hall and the wall.
I don't know where the map room is, so. I, I know where this general area.
You know what Mike's office is?
Yeah, I know, I know the general area, but I don't know where.
It's pretty good space.
Window in it and stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
It's pretty good space.
It has an exterior window in it.
Yeah.
Um, the, the wall jets in about three and a half feet right now. So we've been talking, I've been talking with Kyle, we're getting a price on bringing the wall out. And so that we'll add space to that office, and we hope to get two people in there. I don't know until, it's very difficult to look. Because it's been the catch-all for so long. So we're trying to clean it out, we're, we've gotta work on getting a phone installed and whatnot. So that it can be used as an office. Um, I have no doubt in my mind that it will be suitable for one person. I don't know about for two, but I can tell you, we're all doing a lot there with a little bit of space. You know that, I got four people in an office that's twelve by fourteen. So, um, to say I can't get two people, I probably can get two people. Will all of the files from planning and conservation come down? I'm thinking not. I'm thinking just bring down the files you are working on your day-to-day operations and leave the majority of your files upstairs for now. While we continue to work on this uh, spacious issue. One of the things that we are actually looking at right now is um, an office trailer. So, we're still trying to find a suitable, um, a suitable office space for everybody that might work. Um, and, and Kyle and I work on this daily. So I think when the, the map room will be fine, short term, long term. You know, we're still up in the air in terms of what's going on, but I'm, I'm happy to get somebody out of the attic. I don't, it's not safe. So, um, for different reasons, it's not safe. I, I worry about fire excessively up there. Um, so I'm happy to have her come down to the map room. I think it's safer, and you know, she's visible and not. Out of the.
Secluded.
Yeah, that's, that's where my biggest thing is. It, it, it's a really secluded area, and you're not really interacting with any of the other employees. And you're not, you're not really public facing, which is, which is fine in itself, but you're kinda just left there, right? And no one sees or knows what's happening, and to me, it's, it's not good teamwork. It's, I'd rather have everybody together. That way you guys can see everybody, protect each other as needed, talk to each other as needed, and not to mention, it's, it's more of a closet than it is an office at this point.
Yeah.
So.
One's open enough space for customers to come in and open up plans and do all that sort of thing. You know, so I'm one person at a time, and I still go in.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I would argue that there's not much space upstairs either, or it's pretty narrow space up top, and. But I, it, to me, it's been this one thing, it's safety, safety, safety. That's been my issue with it since day one. I don't think there's safety, there's only, you know, so I wanna do what we can to get people out of there, and that's why I was like, okay, great. Let's get everyone over to the fire station, let's do what we need to do. And if this is a temporary fix to keep her in the building. And get her out of upstairs, then I'm all for it.
But it's for two people, it's gonna be for two, you are gonna hire a replacement for Victoria, right?
Yeah, but, well, I don't wanna say, yes, that's the plan, right? You know, like, I don't wanna uh, lie and say that I definitely have someone, we, we never know. But yes, I mean, we would like.
Know how many square feet are in the room now?
I think it's a hundred and fifty-ish square feet, and we're probably gonna add something like forty square feet to it. So it'd be like two hundred square feet. But what we can do is, as we're getting closer, we, we need to clean it out first. Like I said, we've gotta get some electrical stuff in there. Uh, you guys can come down, and we can go over, talk to Kyle. Kyle's on top of this like crazy. So if there's something you need to change or do or look at, I mean, we're just trying to make it work for everybody. You do, you, I mean, I have talked to Nickin and explained to her that this was my plan to try to get her downstairs.
It's in Constellation. It was at one time the police station.
What was that? The map room?
Yeah.
Really?
I think the photo.
Died in nineteen seventy-eight.
That was the police station.
I believe if you look at.
That and the water department, uh, room was the communications, and the tax collector was between them, so he had to get out.
If you, if you go in the water department, I believe there's a photo that's still up of that, depicting that room from when it was being used as the police station. With the old uh, um, those connections of the old salt, the old, how telephones used to work, you'd plug it in to make an extension. Switchboards, yeah. So there's a photo in that office that depicts that, which is great.
Charlie, you're showing your age.
I know it.
Still here smiling.
That's it.
Alright, yeah.
Alright, so are we good to vote on this?
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to move the senior clerk for Conservation Planning ZVA to the map room.
A motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now take it over to Selectman Lobes, personnel.
Alright, I'm gonna do one, I'm gonna kick it back to you for number twenty five, cause I can't vote for myself. So, uh, number twenty four, as it was alluded earlier, uh, we're here to acknowledge the resignation of Victoria Alfaro Duran. As Planning and Land Use Admin, effective eight two, twenty twenty four. Victoria, thank you for everything you've done in that, in those departments. Uh, you'll be missed, and um, good luck in your future endeavors. So, uh, gentlemen, taking twenty five back to you.
Alright, so that, so this is uh, appointment of uh, Selectman Lobes to the Sewer Line Extension Committee. Effective five sixteen, twenty twenty four through six thirty, twenty twenty five, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
A motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, item twenty six, discussion of vote on which selectmen to appoint to the Southeast Regional Transportation Authority. Southeast, Southeastern Regional Transit Authority Representative and Designee for the Town of Freetown, effective seven one, twenty twenty four. Through six thirty, twenty twenty five.
And it is representative and then designated two separate things, two separate people?
Yeah.
That seems obvious, just wanted to make sure. Anyone want this one?
You know, I'm on the disability, the Council of Disability, I'm wondering if those two bleed in together. As far as, I know we had a conversation uh, on the Council of Disa- of Commission of Disability regarding SRTA. Making sure they were able to pick up folks with uh, wheelchairs and things like that. So how much, if that does bleed over that, that way, I think. I guess I would nominate myself, say, hey, I think I'd be a good represent, I'm already doing it for the Council of Disability, or the Commission of Disability. So this is, this is an extension of that, I'm already having that conversation with the head of SRTA for that, so that's, that makes sense to you, to you two. To take, continue that relationship and be building off of that.
Yeah, it's fine with me, I'll take the, the.
Designee?
Yeah.
Okay, easy, I'll, so I'll, I'll do this vote then.
Perfect.
So I'll entertain a motion uh, to appoint uh, Selectman Lobes as the representative for the SRT. Or SRT Southeastern Regional Transit Authority Representative. And uh, Selectman Zager as the designated for the, for the Southeast, Southeastern Regional Transit Authority. Effective seven one, twenty twenty four through six thirty, twenty twenty five.
Should we break that into two votes?
Yeah, should, you're right, sorry, excuse my friend.
Neither one of them can vote.
We'll edit that out. Nope, no, we won't.
Alright, so I'll, I'll do that, so. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Selectman Lobes to the Southeast, Southeastern Regional Transit Authority Representatives.
A motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, now, I'll entertain a motion to uh, to appoint Selectman Zager. As a designated for the Southeastern Regional Transit Authority Represent, uh, yeah, designated, I guess.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's tricky.
Sorry.
Nope, we got it.
Threw you off on that one.
Yeah, it's that, uh, the, it's the T that gets you at the end. Alright, um, that is number twenty six, we're on to twenty seven, discussion of point. Discussion of vote to appoint Selectman Chosen Agenda Item Number Twenty Five to SRTA Southeastern.
We did that, right?
Yep, that's all done, thank you. Number twenty eight, discussion of vote whether to roll over up to thirty-six vacation hours for Deb Petty. From fiscal year twenty four to fiscal year twenty five. Deb, it sounds like you have not enough time off.
I tried.
She's not enough time to take off.
I tried, I have thirty-six hours left, and I was gonna just let it go, but, um.
No, you should never do that.
I, I just was like, I really need to take it off if I can.
Yeah. It's like my wife's company, she has unlimited vacation, which is just, she's nice, but you know, you never get to use it. So it doesn't matter, and then they, then they don't have to pay you out when you leave. That's the, uh.
We had a limited sick time in Hanson, and you never took it, cause you felt guilty. Like, if you have five days, you take five days, but if you don't, unlimited, it's weird, it's a psychological thing.
Psychological thing. Alright, I have no issues with that.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I hope that means this year you get to use everything that you earn plus thirty-six hours, because you deserve it.
Gonna try.
Absolutely.
Alright, um, I will entertain the motion to roll over up to thirty-six vacation hours for Deb Petty for fiscal year twenty four to fiscal year twenty five.
I'll make that motion?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item agenda twenty nine, discussion and vote on whether to hire a town planner or a planning and land use admin. So currently, we have a, a planning and land use admin, so the discussion is, do we expand that role for an official town planner? So I'm, I'm sure uh, you might have some input, Deb, I'm sure you have input as well, um, not to hear it all. By the way, we can make it an informed decision. But I'm looking at it budget-wise, obviously, if it's a town planner. It's, the budget's gonna go up, right, as far as what that person makes. Um, so, something to think about, right? Um, and that's what, um, I think fifteen, twenty thousand, something like that, increased, or?
I would say so, I think you're gonna have to pay a planner seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars probably, and so my reason for this is. Obviously, Victoria came in as a clerk, she moved up, um, you know, me being a planner. From another town, came with a lot of experience, and we've worked together over the last two years. Um, and we have all of these grants and projects going on, Master Plan, Sewer Line, um, has a mitigation plan. Uh, we have, we, we have, she just got another grant, um, I have the bridge grant, she got a grant to work on the new community building. They require a lot of time and management, um, to bring in a, a clerk in the union or land use administrator, which is, is, is a good job. I don't think it's gonna have the, the experience that I need for them to hit the ground running. Um, and I'm concerned about that, because you cannot drop the ball on these things. So until we replace somebody that can do that caliber of work. I will be doing that caliber of work. I will be picking up her, her job and doing her job and my job, and I don't know how long that's sustainable. So, um, that's, that was, that was what my concern is. I want somebody that's got some real experience. Because there's even, there's a lot more we can be doing as well. Um, all, you know, a planner, they have a role in the town to look at things. Especially with the, uh, the, the master plan coming to fruition, and the MBTA station, there's gonna be a lot of things that need to be addressed in this town. The sidewalk, for instance, right? They, they would know, okay, this needs to be done, we can get this grant. I need someone who can carry the ball on those things as well as myself. Because I have a lot of other responsibilities that I need to take care of. So that was my concern, yes, is it gonna cost us? Yes, it will, but you get what you pay for. And I don't know, I, I will say this, thank you to Kevin Desmaris, because I think he carried the planning and the conservation departments for a very long time and so that we got by without having a town planner. And that truly is because of him on some level. Um, I think that, you know, he stepped down from both, both of those boards and, um, because he was on those boards but also a full-time employee, he, he had some hand in saying, hey, get this done today, get that done. And now that oversight isn't there from him. So I think that, um, it's just a big, it's a big lift, we're in the middle of a lot of projects that I need someone to come and hit the ground running. Not that I, I have to train and teach how to do all of this stuff, I don't think I can get, I don't think it's gonna happen. So that was my concern.
I find it ironic that if you go back one agenda item, we're talking about having to roll over hours because you don't have enough time to take it off, right? You're so busy right now that you feel guilty taking time off. And then we're talking about adding more workload to you, that's completely unfair to you and it's nothing I wanna do. We, a couple of years ago, were able to get, um, you know, the, the job of town planner put into the town. We didn't budget it this year, did we? Did we budget a line on, 'cause I think last year we had budgeted for it and then we didn't this year, if I remember correctly.
I mean, I think it's something we go to the, um, October town meeting and grab some funding, right?
Yeah, absolutely, so I guess that's why, and I think we need someone, to your point, that can hit the ground running that you don't, because. Okay, that's great, we can get someone in, if we, if you have to train them up, we're still talking about you having to take time away from other things that you really should be focused in on, not that there shouldn't be an aspect of your job to oversee, but it's not, it's not a good use of your time overall, so.
Well, my question, next question is, get it on, get it on the October meeting, right? I think that's for the town planner, are we gonna come back at some point, or the boards are gonna come back at some point and ask us to see if we can also hire an, uh, planner, a planning and admin, uh, uh, a planning and land use admin as well? Is that gonna come up? Is that something that's also needed?
Well, I, I don't think a planner would, would work with the Conservation Commission at all, so I, I, I don't wanna speak, uh, selfishly, but.
And that's what I'm getting to, is like, is, is this gonna, is it a one-size-fits-all or?
Yeah, well, it was with Victoria, she, she covered a lot of bases, but.
I mean, there are town pla, I mean, the, the job description will, would encompass, uh, conservation and, and like in Hanson as town planner slash conservation agent, like they do both.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would think that that would be something that we would put into the job description.
Very similar job description, just a little bit different, um, experience level and a pay scale difference, right? That's the difference.
I'll address the conservation, uh, side of it a little bit. And as was said, when Kevin was chairman, you know, he was in the building all the time and he, and his personality, uh, would look at it. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be, uh, as chairman in a, in a voluntary position. I don't wanna say willing, but I'm, I'm not gonna be there to be.
Yeah.
Every day. That's all, but, but the Conservation Commission would need, all they would need is someone to, uh, basically be the, uh, supervise, the, the overseer of the office. In that, you know, make sure that people come to work, uh, that, that they actually, the work gets done. Uh, we've signed, we've hired a conservation agent per diem. Uh, she, uh, has just died the first of, uh, July. Um, she would be able to do a lot of the administrative work within the office. But the position, there's gonna have to be a position to, uh, be the, basically the top dog of, like. Of, of land use. You know, that's, that's it, if the planner is given that, then, alright, and they, they do that job, that's fine. So from the Conservation Commission, uh, end of it, it's, there's gotta be somebody there. The Conservation Commission's gotta do most of the work and, you know, uh, Nicole will do the secretarial work. But it still needs to be that little element.
Makes sense.
To supervise.
My, my other question is like, how, do you think it's gonna be difficult to fill this role as a town, like to find a town planner?
It's not easy to find anybody with, that's decent, you know what I mean? So, yeah, I, uh, difficult, I don't know, I think it all depends on money, right? I think that's, that'll be the, the, the sticking point, that's why I say seventy-five to a hundred, I mean, planners can make up to a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars right now, um.
I'm on a website, mass planners, and there's always, uh, job offers going up.
Yeah.
For a planner, we're looking for planner or admin, blah, blah, all the time, all, you know, all over the state.
Um, I think it's, you know, planners move, for me, I was in Hanson, I'll never go up that way ever again, I, I, I'm not traveling. So I think it, it might be, you might get somebody that's working in Hingham or Hanson or somewhere that doesn't wanna go to that location anymore. They might live in Far River and they don't wanna drive, like, that's how you're gonna get talent at this point, just that it's a better fit for their lifestyle. Other than that, it, it's, I don't know, we're gonna, we did post the job internally to get the clock ticking, the union position and putting it, um, so that that's already rolling forward, we can put that out in, once we've done the internal seven days. But I just wanted, I mean, we can post for both and see what we get for talent.
Yeah, my, my suggestion is to post for both, uh, that way, exactly, 'cause, gosh, we've been.
We could find a good person, maybe, we think that we can be coached up, like, like, like Victoria was, right? And then, I, yeah, I, I, I think that makes sense, too.
And, and that's great, except for the, in, and I agree, but then we, we go back to the fact of who's coaching them up.
Yeah, I know. My concern is, you're right.
But something, someone's better than nothing. That's why I'm saying, I do agree, I just, you know.
It's just some level whoever we put in there, that, that, there's gonna be a, a catch-up period. Right? It's like, hey, what's going on, what's, projects are in play, what's, what needs to be done first, there's gonna be a triage of events that are gonna happen. So putting both out there will give us a good sense of, you know, who's applying and who wants to come work in Freetown, so.
Yeah, I'll just put, um, I'll just, you know, we won't put the salary range, right? With the union, we will, 'cause we know what it is, but the other one, we'll leave it negotiable and then we'll see what, who applies.
Yeah, and that, I guess, that's my, one of my concerns, is like, we're adding another salary to it and, you know, tax season's always around the corner. I'm always cognizant of making sure that, th- this isn't gonna break the bank or anything, but, you know, people are still looking at all the, the crunch of the numbers, making sure it's there.
I mean, a planner is not an essential role, but you, I think that over the last two years, Victoria, allow myself. We've shown you what you can do if you have somebody who's good.
The ROI, like, the amount of money that has come into the town.
Oh, one hundred percent.
And the projects that we've been able to put forth, um, and, and Victoria, extremely instrumental in all of that. Um, you wouldn't have that without a planner. And I don't think you can expect the TA to run in this size of a town to do all of that.
No, especially with a town that's evolving the way it is, and, you know, we, we always talk about the fact of, oh, you know, um. You know, these grants are gonna slow down, they gotta slow down, and they don't. But if they do, I guess that's, you know, the other upside to having someone that we hire in and kinda have these caveats of what the job description is so they can kinda morph into doing other things, so we're keeping them busy as well.
Don't forget, most planners too do handle, I, I was a planner, I did the planning board. This job is planning board, conservation and ZBA, so it's not gonna slow down to the point where it's not useful, 'cause there's three boards. And even if it's not that busy for conservation, and I think it ebb and flows, right? I think Victoria has told me, like, conservation was real busy and now conservation has slowed down, but planning got busy, so I think it's that ebb and flow. And so with the three departments, there's always something to do. And then there's rules and regs that need to be reviewed always, there's, uh, ZBA rules and regs that need to be reviewed. So when you have downtime, those are the things that you pick up and start doing.
Is the planning position, would it be a managerial position for other staff, like, they get a tech in or and or Nicole or?
Would be a bylaw employee, a department head, so not a union employee. So it would be, uh, oversight of the clerk, which is Nicole at the moment.
Have you thought about doing part, uh, not a full-time, but a thirty-hour or something if it?
For a planner, and then what, have another staff? 'Cause I don't think thirty hours is enough.
I, I, I'm not gonna, I'm just asking if you've thought about that.
I didn't, because I, I know how many hours Victoria was putting in, so I, I don't know how I could do less unless we had two staff now. And I don't know that we wanna get that, our overhead that high because of the potential, the MBTA didn't pass. Our grant's gonna slow down, is some of the work gonna slow down? I feel comfortable in having a full-time employee because it is three departments, but to have one and a half, I don't, I don't see that.
And then you also would reduce the amount of money, right, so the salary would look, you know, a little, uh, little less enticing if we reduce the amount of hours, so.
Well, you never know, right, because sometimes you, people want a part-time position, so you never know the, who's out there for talent and what they're looking for.
I think we're flexible.
Yeah.
Now, before Victoria leaves, and I'm sure the board will wait as well, I know that she would go to, she'd be working her regular hours during the week and then it seems like every night she had a town meeting for planning ZBA. We need to break that down, so we can give a, when we speak to candidates, they have a clear understanding of what exactly they're, they're gonna be asked to do. And maybe even break some of those roles apart or change the hours of those after-hour meetings during the day, so that's incorporated into her day so that she, she doesn't run into your issue, which you don't have time to take your vacation time, and I don't want that to happen to any other employee as well. So something to think about as we move forward with the position, um, if we can tweak it to the, to the point that it's palpable for the employee. And to the boards, of course.
Yeah, I mean, we need twice a month, uh, or ten months out of the year, and, uh, maybe we have to go to once a month or something if that is, uh.
Yeah.
Bargaining chip or something.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's, I'm not saying that's why she left, right, but it, it could have contributed to.
Yeah, and she was on a lot of other meetings too, right, it wasn't just.
So make sure that.
Yeah, exactly.
Something we're gonna, we're gonna solve tonight, but it is something to start getting the wheels turning and thinking about and, you know. And, and to the point that keeps getting brought up while we put the stuff out there and see who applies and, you know, take it from there. Because it could be someone that doesn't have a problem with going to any night meetings and then you can continue on and provide the service of having it twice a month. So people aren't waiting or whatever, so, yeah.
I, I drafted a job description, I'll tweak it, get it to you, department heads, and, um, we can look at that. And you can see what I'm looking at.
Very good, thank you.
So do we need a vote on this now? I mean, like, we already have a position.
You already have it approved at town meeting.
And we're gonna post both, both job descriptions, right?
No, let's not crutch ourselves against having one or another.
And then we'll put it on the October meeting and.
If we find somebody who's a clerk now, who's talented, and we could see that could, could fill the shoes, I mean, you just don't know.
Are you looking for like bachelor's level or are you associates or?
Well, a town planner would be a bachelor's and, and a master's preferred generally.
So this town, Wes Newberry, just posted one for a town planner, part-time, twenty hour, twenty-eight hours per week, benefits eligible position with some evening meetings required, hourly rate thirty-two to forty-six, DOQ? I don't know what that means.
So, DOQ.
Something on qualifications.
Yeah, depending.
Depending on qualifications, there we go, I was like, what?
So forty dollars an hour, eighty-five thousand a year, eighty-six a year.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Nice little town.
That's why they can do twenty-eight hours a week.
Yeah, well, anyway, that's, that's, that, these things pop up like weekly and on that.
Yeah.
We see them, and, and their own, and the thing is, we do see those and we're all, when we put announcements out, we're all getting the same people interviewing for the same jobs. So we're literally fighting other towns for the same pool of people and having, and having something to kinda keep them here is getting harder and harder, it really is.
But to Deb's point, it, it, it could be, it could also be somebody who's in the city and wants to move to.
Absolutely.
Smaller town, they get sick of the, uh, bureaucracy there.
Traffic, could be a million, yeah.
Or their assistant, they wanna become a full, yeah, so there's a lot of, you gotta put it out there to find out.
Once we found out, we started the internal ball, uh, rolling, and so that way, once we, that goes through its, its process, we, we can then put it out to the world and, uh, see who's out there.
Sounds good, so I think we're done with that, um, speaking of meetings, I realize it's almost eight o'clock and I need to get home, my babysitter needs to leave, so.
So we're just gonna do signatures?
Yeah. Yeah, any public input?
Yeah, hi, I'm Dean Petty, uh, I own Brian Hill Farms.
Yep.
I took on a project that ended up coming on quick at one-eight-two Bailey Road.
Yep.
Uh, the septic system requires a water line, um, I need, I did not have time to get on the agenda to, to get a road opening permit. The water line is on the side of the house, I'm thinking that I'm gonna have to cut four feet in, six feet wide uh, to access the water line, um, to tap it, to put a, um, they're, they're making, these people put in. Tie into the water, this is an existing well, but it's too close to the septic. So we're tying in, there's water, it's on Bailey Road, so, um, what I was asking for is just, 'cause I don't know when you meet. The next meeting's not for a little while, uh, for a road open and permit on one-eight-two Bailey Road in Freetown.
Yeah, we have no issues doing that, right?
No, I mean, so you.
Sounds pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the same side of the, the road, so there's not gonna be much of a thing and.
Have you ever spoken to board of health, board of, board of, uh, have you, has, have you spoke to any other board prior to this one? Was permits pulled or anything?
I called Dave, uh, today, like I said, this guy just came in real quick. Plans changed from, you know, construction's one of those things, it's hard to, you, you, you think you're going there next, but it ended up. Gotta go here and, so the septic, uh, you know, the septic is, uh, started, I pulled a permit on that and I'm doing septic now, the septic will be done probably tomorrow and, uh, you know, I, I'm actually probably be four or five days before I get into it and, uh, line everything up for the water line. But I don't know, you guys don't meet for a couple of weeks, so I, just trying to, so it's one of those things, you know, you, they got a buyer and it's, uh, pressure to get it done to, so these people don't have to go to a hotel room, they got no place to go when they sell their house and.
Alright, so, yeah, that makes it, I think what, what we'll do is, I can have a motion here, we can, we can approve it from our perspective. We just gotta get sign off from the, um, from the highway department and sign off from, from chief of police.
Yeah.
And just, 'cause, yeah, 'cause it's the road and, and fire, right? Just get those three signatures, are we, are we okay with this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because the, the board of health has already approved the plan to do the septic, right? So I don't see an issue.
And the water line, yeah.
It's already signed?
So it's just a matter of timing, yeah.
Yeah, alright.
Yeah, it's, I, I didn't get on the agenda and.
No, I know, and it's tough because we only meet, yeah, things happen fast and we don't, we don't move fast.
Have to wait two weeks or whatever it is to.
Yep, understood.
Yeah, I, I got it. Alright, so that, all entertained a motion, um, to issue a, a road opening permit uh, for one-eight-two Bailey Road, conditional on sign-ups from fire, uh, highway and police.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Just before you leave, we get your contact information, just to make sure we, we have a clear line of communication.
You need, you need my contact?
Yeah, if you want, you can come on down, you can write it on my paper and we'll make sure we, while we sign, we're gonna be here signing away, just name and number, that way we can contact you. If you wanna add your email, in case, if the board of health already has it, you might as well just continue on with that. Make sure, by the way.
Yep, we'll sign.
So I'm just gonna give you a little bit of an update while you're, while you're signing.
Oh, great.
The bathrooms are eighty percent done at the town hall, they're functioning.
That's exciting.
The porta-johns are gone, I'm sorry to say.
People that missed the porta-palies.
There's no more porta-johns.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And then, so the, um, porta-johns are gone.
That's, Charles.
And the town hall, um, because we had that temporary wall that came down, we ended up repainting the whole interior of the town hall and redoing all of the flooring, so when you come in, there's a facelift and it looks amazing.
Really?
And we were able to take the veterans' chair that was on that big base and, um, Kyle and Tim took it off the base and it fits beautifully in there, it looks amazing, I'm so excited because we get to keep the chair and like, you're gonna be able to see the chair, so I think that was such a win, right, because we've been struggling, trying to find the space for this.
And that base wasn't a part of the original.
No, it wasn't, um, it's still roped off, so you're not gonna sit on it or anything, but it, you walk in and it's the first thing you see and we were able to hang the veterans' board of information above the chair now.
Awesome.
So I think that's probably. So I think that's probably the best news I can tell you about, is that, that, that there's room for the chair, it looks great. Um, it's gonna get the respect it deserves, which is important.
Yeah.
So, uh, but come by and look at the Town Hall.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Come by and take a look at the Town Hall when you get a chance.
So I, I was able to go by on Friday, and, and one of the funny things.
You didn't see it painted, though.
No, it was.
But painted over the weekend.
Oh.
From Friday to today.
Yeah, that's interesting, because, and one of the things I said, I'm like, it seems brighter in here, and Mike commented to me that the floor's actually darker than it was.
Yeah.
And I'm like, but it seems brighter.
See it now with all the, the wainscoting is white.
Oh.
And all the trim.
And falls white, was that tannish gray, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not just me.
So super excited about that. Uh, we put the RFP out for the windows, for the Town Hall windows, so you'll be, you guys will get those options. Cause I put a lot of different options in play.
That sounds expensive.
It is very expensive, but we'll see.
I'm happy for the windows, I am.
We are funded, I mean, we do have the funds.
Be unhappy that those windows are, are gonna get put in.
Yeah, it's huge.
We did, um, we were declined to get for so many opera funds to demolish the Red Building, I just got that today. So, we have a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars of opera funds that now I need to reallocate to something else. So I'm working on that diligently because those have to be done soon.
Soon, very soon.
The federal opera money, there's about three hundred thousand dollars left. And I'm looking to come in with a list of projects for you guys to decide on how you wanna spend that. I'm waiting for the office trailer, cause that's how we probably would fund that.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's where we're at, we've got all the school projects coming in this week.
Yep.
Uh, I'm writing the RFP for the municipal fiber, uh, which is a little complicated, I'm, I'm hoping to have that go out this week. That's where we're at, so we're still doing projects. Oh, and I did mention that Victoria got the grant, Ocking Glass is coming down on Septem, no, August ninth. He wants to see the library and the COA, um, and, you know, have, like, he came last year on the bridge.
Yeah.
I'm walking around, so if other, any of you are available on August ninth, at eleven thirty, it's a Friday, he is coming. Um, to look at that, but that is exciting, uh, cause those grants usually don't, they don't fund buildings. So, um, super job Victoria did with that grant, and, um, we'll see how that goes.
It's federal.
It's a federal fund, right, so MBTA zoning doesn't affect the federal grants, although the federal grants are a lot more difficult to administer. But, um, nonetheless, it's, it's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a lot of money, you know what I mean? Um, so, so, good stuff, still moving forward in the town, we still got a lot of stuff moving. And I, I think we're starting to see the fruits of all of our labor, so I think it helps a little bit, when like the Town Hall employees, I think, like a little refresh.
Yeah, and just being, it's amazing what that can do, just for the vibe, right?
It's morale boost.
Like being able to stay inside the building to go to the bathroom. That's gonna be a huge morale boost.
And have, then actually go to bathroom and there's more room now.
Yeah.
To use the bathroom and wash your hands and. Still, we, we still haven't fixed the, uh, that's where you clean your pots and pans, but.
No, and we really liked that outdoor sink, that was really awesome.
That's the next step.
You gotta go.
Yeah, I gotta go, alright, well, that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.